I'd like to call the Henry County Council meeting to order for November 30th, 2023. If you'd please stand for the pledge and a short prayer, please. Should have the minutes from our last meeting fairly lengthy. A lot of area was covered. Are there any additions or subtractions? If not, entertain a motion to approve this to be October 26th meeting.
So moved.
Removed by Shannon, seconded by Harold. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero. Yes, Corey Murphy.
Thank you, council. The first page there is several QR codes. Trying to be funny at the top. It's a play on Star Wars. But just an opportunity for you to stay connected to us, both on the economic development and the tourism. And then I'm fairly active on LinkedIn as well. The second item can line your litter box when you're done, but it's an article that I put together for the Chamber Magazine. It talks about all the good activity going across the county, literally in every corner of the county. And some of those projects you participated in and incentivized. So appreciate that. One of the projects that I left out inadvertently was the Jack's Donuts on Troy Avenue. So a lot going on. I'll mention the Make My Move, which is a partnership between the county and the city and state. And the Economic Development Corporation manages that project. So Make My Move targets remote workers outside of the state of Indiana to move to Henry County to bring a job with them. There's an incentive. We're also targeting to traditional employers. As long as the employee moves from out of state and takes residency in Henry County, that same incentive package would be available. The county is an employer. So I mentioned it to the city as well. So if you, you know, if you're trying to, if one of the departments is trying to recruit and somebody comes from out of state, that same incentive package would be available to that person. And the reason why I keep saying from out of state, that's in statute. We don't want to incentivize people moving from one county to the other. A lot of information on Ready. I'm cognizant of your itinerary, so I'm going to move fast. People in the audience are going, yeah, right. He never moves fast. Ready is a state program working regionally. I wanted you to see how the, how the state has organized itself or self-organized itself. We're in the East Central category with eight other counties there or seven other counties in the orange. I've given you a frequently asked questions that's put out by the state on Ready. I would highlight, so on the back of the first page, the match requirements. IDC's program policy established goals for the initiative in each region with an expectation that there is a one-to-one public match and a three-to-one private philanthropic match. So a total of four-to-one. This mirrors the requirements of Ready 1.0. The match requirement, like in Ready 1.0, is not a project-specific expectation, but rather a regional or program-wide goal. You've heard me say that the ideal or preferred capital stack on a Ready project is 20% Ready, 20% Local, 60% Private. Not every project is going to be able to generate private support. A perfect example would be a sewer line. So some projects are going to vary from that preferred. So it really is a negotiation or a conversation here locally at the county level, with project sponsors, at the region level, and then finally at the state level. Our, the next document is a call for projects, and that call for projects closed on November 17th. I'm giving this to you because it, it's a really good summary of what our region goals are, what the state's key performance indicators are, and what the state goals are. So our regional plan is due to the state in February. And it will focus on strategies and goals with a few projects. The state will go through their process, make an allocation award across the state in April or May. After that, it will be a conversation with our regional partners, with local project sponsors, on which projects get funded. The state is going to take a much more active role in comparison to Ready 1.0 in Ready 2.0. So I wanted to give you that timeline. And I'm going to repeat myself again. At the end of the day, the projects, wait for it, here's a pun, that are ready to go are going to be a lot more compelling because they want to draw down the funds and move forward as quickly as possible. How are projects going to get selected at the region level? Ultimately, like I said, it's going to be a conversation with the state at the end of the day. So each county has two people on the Regional Steering Committee. Henry County has two people, or myself and Jennifer Fox, with the Community Foundation. About five elected officials in the county are going to be invited to participate in a poll, a survey. Two from the county, two from the city, Spiceland, Middletown, and Knightstown. One, so two from the county, two from the city, one from the following, Spiceland, Middletown, and Knightstown. How was that arrived? That was a recommendation from the consultant. And Jennifer and I agreed with that approach. So very soon, individuals representing the county government are going to receive an email. The lucky recipients for Henry County Government are Kenning Gray and Bobby Plummer. So, and I'm going to send you an email or call you and let you know that this is coming. But we're building in an opportunity to seek feedback along the way from our local government partners. However, we don't have the time to go to the town board in each respective and take a vote, but we're attempting. When I say we, this is really the region doing this. I just happen to be aware of their process. And then as feedback occurs along the way, we're going to seek feedback from the private sector as well. And all this will lead to a submission in February. Questions about Ready or anything else? Maybe I didn't touch on something? Maybe you're ready for me to be done, and that's okay, too. What location, Harold? By the YMCA? I believe the landowner there, and that'd be Jeff Smiley, and the movie theater operator are in conversations. Is it imminent? I, I can't answer that. I don't know.
Corey, on the hand that you had on Ready, two things I have a question on. It says, one of the key performance indicators increased per capita income by $2,750. I just printed out the latest updated data from Indiana. It shows Henry County ranked 79th in the median household income. And then down it says private investment four-to-one, 25% of total investment is in disadvantaged communities. Would we be categorized as a disadvantaged community, being that our median household income ranks 79 out of 92 counties?
Excuse me. I don't know off the top of my head. So I will, I'll send you an email. I'll, I'll send the entire council an email in regards. The state has a map.
Okay.
On who's disadvantaged. And there are a lot of data sources out there. I don't know what data sources they used.
Okay, fair enough. I know we were when we did Stellar, but that was 2019, and things have changed since 2019, so. I will say I've attended two of the meetings up at Ball State. I'm very impressed with the engineering firm that was hired as a consultant, HWI, I believe.
HWC.
HWC. Very impressed. I wasn't involved in 1.0, but I'm impressed with who the region's hired for 2.0 as a consultant.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone from the chamber. So we have GIS. We have Angie, and you can introduce Joe.
Okay, so today we just want to give a presentation, an update on our section corner mapping project through the surveyor's office. So this is Joe Mullins from USI Consultants. They're the firm that are helping us in doing the section corner mapping. So we're going to divide up the presentation. Hopefully, it won't take more than 20 minutes. It shouldn't, I promise.
Thank you. Again, my name is Joe Mullins. I'm a licensed surveyor in Indiana and Kentucky. I'm in my 39th year in the profession, of which I worked 18 years in county government, 13 years for Wayne County Surveyor's Office, and five years in the Hamilton County Surveyor's Office. This is a very unique project. To my knowledge, no county in Indiana has ever taken the time to take all their current and historic section corner records, break them down to the section level, and make them available on the county website. Give you a little background of what section corners are and why are they important. Well, almost all proper in Indiana begins at a section corner. Even if you live in a subdivision, that subdivision ties back to a section corner. Section corners are the foundation for boundary surveying. When and how did section corners come about? After the Revolutionary War, the United States needed money. Putting in big tax on the people would not go over too well, particularly since the war, in large part, was due to heavy taxation. After the Treaty of Paris in 1783, the United States now had an asset, a large amount of land. By selling that land, the government could raise the funds it needed. The rectangular public land survey system was first proposed by Thomas Jefferson. It was a new way of selling off land. Instead of the old, what they call meets and bounds way of describing land, which would be like beginning at Jones's Corner, going northeast 500 feet to a 12-inch oak tree, and so on. The rectangle public land survey system would divide the land into a grid pattern where a person would buy a square of that grid. The land ordinance of 1785, adopted by the Continental Congress, called for the rectangular public land survey system. This was first used in Ohio with trial and error, and then they figured it out by the time they got to the Indiana line. Indiana was originally surveyed in 1805. The original federal surveyors divided the land into six-by-six mile squares called townships. Yeah, you go back one more where you were. Keep going back. Yeah. The one with the state of Indiana on it. Two down. Okay, go two down. Yeah. That's okay. The six-by-six mile squares called townships. Then they divided the township into three-six individual, one-mile-by-one-mile squares called sections. They would set a stake every half-mile and at the corners of the section and reference the stake's location with surrounding trees. The county surveyor would follow behind, either finding the original stake or re-establishing its location by the reference trees. They would then put a stone in the ground, a section cornerstone. In Indiana, it'd usually, usually be a large granite rock, oblong, egg-shaped, sitting on its end, and sometimes the surveyor would chisel necks in the top. Go ahead. The county surveyor would keep records of these surveys in books. The books in Henry County date back to the middle to late 1800s. Go ahead. The Perpetual Corner Records Act of 1965 fixed the responsibility of section corners upon the office of the county surveyor. With this act, the surveyor was given the directions of record-keeping and required them to reestablish, find or reestablish 5% of the total number of section corners in the county every year. They were also required to check and reference 5% of existing corners every year. So theoretically, after 20 years, every section corner would be found or sat and checked at least once. The act also states that the work be performed by a licensed surveyor. Although county surveyors aren't required to be licensed, section corner perpetuation is to be performed by a licensed surveyor. To assist with this responsibility, $1 of each deed recorded was allocated to the section corner perpetuation fund. This amount was raised to $5 in 2017. Back to the project. The idea of this project began when a private surveyor needed information from the county surveyor's office regarding a project with the new county jail. But the building was closed due to COVID lockdown. Steve Russ, the Henry County Surveyor, saw the need to have the records housed in the surveyor's office available when the office was not open. Conversations then started with Steve and Derek Tao, client liaison, business development department at USI, on finding a way to make the records housed in the county surveyor's office available online so that private surveyors, as well as the general public, could do the research without coming to the surveyor's office. The county received ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, funds to use in different projects, and Steve Champion using a small portion of these funds for this project. Advantages. Related to the initial COVID lockdown situation, one important advantage is that the, of this project is the surveyor's office has less traffic in the office, lessening the potential spread of viruses. Another important advantage is having everything stored digitally in a geographical database, a GIS, to allow for easy maintenance in future regarding the section corner perpetuation. Finally, and possibly most important, is that it ensures that these historic records in the surveyor's office are stored forever in digital format and easily searchable, meaning that the risk of losing ill-replaceable information to fire, water damage, or wear and tear from human contact is eliminated. There are secondary benefits for private surveyors. Obviously, the drive to the county surveyor's office is eliminated, with information being online any time of day. Finding out quickly what section corners are available or not available helps the surveyor to make better decisions about estimating how much it costs to do the job. Finally, surveyors can have confidence they have gotten all the information available and not worry that they might have missed a page of a notebook somewhere. Process of the project. The county surveyor's office had all their records scanned. USI then took those scanned documents, organized them, and extracted out all the information related to each individual section. We then grouped these documents into three categories: county notes of original federal surveyors, current tie cards, and historic county records. Next, we handed these documents over to Angie Gibson, the Henry County GIS minister, for her to incorporate this data into the county website.
Okay. And so, once they gave me the data, we were, when we were planning this, we were looking at these points, and we decided to organize the data per section as opposed to section corner. If every section corner had its own PDF, and there'd be three PDFs per section corner, we would have ended up with like 5,000 PDFs that we had to maintain, organize, and update. So when we were doing this, we decided to organize the data per section, which put it down to like 1,200 PDFs that we have to now maintain and organize and keep on our servers. So all the PDFs I downloaded and saved into our GIS common, for those of you who are on the server. It's a GIS commons area. That's where Schneider comes in every night and accesses our GIS data to update Beacon overnight. So everything's there for them to access, and you can see that's kind of how we organized it, by section, section township range, tie card, historic county records, county notes of original federal surveyors. And then the actual section corners that they found, so we had an original GPS geodatabase that had some section corners on it, but when he was going through the tie cards, we were able to relocate a lot more section corners. So he would send those to me in a CBS file. It would just have basic latitude, longitude, and the section corner number. And so then what I did, I geo-coded using the latitude and longitude and made a new layer of the new points, and then I was able to append that to our existing GPS dataset. I went in and put in extra columns in our new, in our geodatabase. They included hyperlinks to those PDFs for Beacon, and then also some additional columns that had space for the new naming convention, because we're changing what we call our section corners. They have whole new names. The first one that he sent me took me like a week, and I realized that I needed a better way to do it. So I put, created some very basic arcade coding. So now when he gives it to me, I can run my arcade expressions and codes. It gets it done. I can do a whole section in a day now, and also eliminates all of my typos when I try to do them individually, because I am known for my typos. So this eliminates my user error by running like expressions and then running tools automatically when the data comes to me. And that's just what the geodatabase looks like. You can see like we have the links, all the PDFs, and all the naming conventions for every GPS section corner point. Quality, control, and tracking. So I just keep an online map, and as I go through each corner, I go through and check out all three PDFs. I make sure that everything in there is correct. I make sure the section corner is where it's supposed to be. You can see all the lighter colored gray, those are all the section corners that are finished and QC'd and ready to go. There's a couple dark ones where I have some, like the darker gray, where I have some questions about maybe a GPS point or a PDF that I have to go back and review. And that bottom yellow is what has lefted in the county. So you can see we're about 70%. And actually, Joe just gave me another download yesterday that covers part of that bottom section, so we're even close, and we're thinking we're going to be done by January. So it's pretty exciting. I have had a few surveyors contact me with needing in I have had a few surveyors contact me with needing information, and it's areas that we've already had done. So I can just like send them those PDFs, and they're just static. They're static, they're getting everything organized in a PDF, what they need, and they're not searching through books and everything. So, pretty exciting. This is on Beacon, it's live. Like I said, it's a work in progress, so that very bottom part of the county isn't done yet. But you can go on Beacon, and if you turn on the section corner layer, you'll see them, there's green, if you click on those, you see there's live links to the current tie cards, the historic county records, and the county notes of original federal surveyors. And Bobby, if you click, I'm sorry, if you go back, just hit the up button. That's okay. Yep, that one. And then... So if you click over current tie card, it should give you a hot link where you can open it? And it doesn't, you'll have to, I actually... If you go to the internet, I have an internet tab open. Yep. Well, no, that's fine, right there, if you just click on that, if you click on that green little dot, the seventeen ten ten. Yep, and so you see the results. You can click on those hot links, and they will open up PDFs. So, if you, current tie card, it should open up the tie cards. If you scroll down, so it's organized by that section. I know that mouse is very slow. If you want to. So we have all those historic ones scanned. It's surveyor language, yes. And then if you go back, if you click on the other two, it's the actual books, those historic county records, and notes of the original federal surveyor. And they're scanned in really well, and they're easy to read, and they're easy to use. So it's pretty exciting, we're the only county that has all three of those documents scanned and available and organized the way they are. So, it's something I've not seen in any other county in Indiana to do. So it's pretty, pretty exciting for me anyways.
I just want to thank the surveyor's office, Steve and Angie and Ruth for all the help. And I want to thank the county council, county commissioners, for approving the funds for this project. And also, as a secretary, I know, want to thank you all also for approving the funds for Angie's position because I know with small counties with modest means to get qualified people, it's difficult. And you did real well with getting Angie, so are there any questions regarding this project?
We agree with the, with the Angie comment, but I've heard that widely among departments. And Angie held a, an hour-long presentation about GIS and the library, the public library, which I attended. It was pretty well attended, and I learned a lot. Amongst the things I learned was we're probably the only county that's gone this far electronically with section corners, which is important to a lot of functions in, in county government and in the county and engineers. And as we grow, this is gonna be very important information, and it's gonna be much more readily and easily accessible. So, kudos. And don't forget the quiz to give to Cory in just a little bit before we leave. Thank you, Angie, and thank you, Joe, appreciate it. Again, we have no one from the chamber still. We have financial commitment letter for Bridge One Six Two that we got from our engineer, Joe Copeland. And we have a handout, and Joe's coming up to give a quick synopsis, so this is a federal aid application.
There, okay. It's that time of year again, federal aid applications. And one bridge that we've included this year for an application is Bridge One Sixty Two, which is on South County Line Road, east of Knightstown over Big Blue River. It's, I believe, the largest county bridge we own. Five spans, roughly two hundred and forty-some feet long, big one. What we intend to do, the proposal, is to replace the deck and do some minor maintenance underneath the bridge. So, big job, as you can see by the numbers. Now, these numbers are inflated because of inflation because this project probably won't hit a end dot letting until maybe, I'm figuring, twenty thirty, probably. So, it's a ways down the road, but it needs to be done. You can drive across the bridge and see areas that's been patched now, large, large areas. So, we want to try to preserve the structure instead of having to replace the whole thing. We're saving the beams, and we're, the idea is to make it a jointless bridge, so hopefully it'll last that much longer. Don't have that weather and that water getting down underneath the structure. This, the commissioners have signed a letter of financial commitment for end dot, that's required. But I wanted your approval to proceed with the support letter for end dot. You need to know about this, definitely.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Looking at the numbers, of course, twenty thirty is where the big numbers hit us.
Right.
And do we need to plan in our budget to have those dollars? Do we need to accumulate those dollars or put some back every year to have that, is what I'm getting at?
I should have went on to say, this is paid eighty twenty.
Saw that.
They will pay eighty percent. But, in twenty thirty for the construction, they require our twenty percent right up front. So, yes, we should be saving for that twenty thirty letting date so that we're prepared and ready to go.
Thank you.
And how much of that will be through the cumulative bridge fund and added, and as you put it in, or other funds?
I'd like to take it all out of Q bridge if it's possible, but...
But not the current state of...
Q bridge is only, it's less than four hundred thousand dollars a year, so...
Right.
I may have to take, go to MBH restricted, that's allowed to use for bridges. I may take some out of it to make this happen, but we are gonna have to save up to be able to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Duly noted, other questions for Joe? Do we need to approve this, Joel? Okay, I see their signatures, do I have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Second? Who seconded? Kyle, I heard two people seconded. Writer's choice. Kyle and Shannon, both... Oh, you, well, Kyle then, Kyle actually, I heard a peep out of him. And Susan made the motion, any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded, if not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Thank you.
Passes six zero. Thank you, Joe. We have a request for longevity consideration from the prosecutor's office. Our prosecutor, Michael Mahoney, is coming up. This is for Amy Goyer, and we have some information that he sent us. And I have a possible ordinance number that I think Joel gave to each of you at the beginning of the meeting. But I'm gonna let Michael speak as to the rationale for this first.
We, we had an employee who left her position for approximately six weeks. She tried out another position, and the position was still open, and she reapplied and was rehired. I would just ask the court to consider granting this, she was gone for a six-week period, but she's a valuable member of the staff. As many of you know, the Child Support Office, we're, we're, um, the Child Support Office need has as strict compliance with federal statutes as well as state statutes that we are required to, we are required to follow and comply with because we do receive federal reimbursement to run the office. And so not having to train someone new in all those requirements, and not having to get them all, be able to do all the background checks and everything was a benefit to the county as well, and benefit to our office to not have to train someone new. So, the services that are provided to the citizens of Henry County, there wasn't, it was just an interruption of that period. But I just think it would be appropriate for this request, and I would ask the court to consider granting that. Or, I'm sorry, I'm not in court, ask the council to consider granting that, I'm sorry.
We've been promoted to court.
No, I apologize, I get behind a lecturer and I start talking and...
We can tell you've been presenting before the court before. So this is a five hundred dollar request regarding the increase in longevity, I think that we recently passed, correct?
Yes, yes, and that was in line, and thank you for doing that. I know that was a very generous thing that you did to recognize the employees who've, who've worked here. And as I mentioned into this letter, this employee, she, she has eight years of experience, at least eight years of experience with the Child Support Office. And there was, there was an original break in that, but she was rehired originally on November fourth of two thousand nineteen, left July seventh, and was rehired August fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three.
So, close to a five-week break.
Five, five to six weeks, yes.
Yeah. At my request, Joel, and this is in red, the only change to, this would be ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve for the consideration of the council. What's in red is for purposes of determining years of service, a separation from employment for a period of eight weeks or less shall be considered, shall not be considered a break in service and years of service. So, this would be limited to eight weeks or less. Also, I've been in a conversation with Debbie, could not be here for another function that she's involved in as part of being auditor. She seems to share that this may, if we go back retroactively, may affect up to three other prior employees. So my question to the council would be, do we want to make this limited to those actions from two thousand twenty-three? Or just deal with this particular case? Because I know we're doing a major thing with Wagner and Shealy relating the job classification, and also on the agenda is looking at possible changes and updates in the personnel manual. So what's, thoughts from the, the council? Are you interested in doing this at all? Are you interested in doing it for this one case? Are you interested in making it retroactive to possibly up to four people who might fall under this? I talked to Joel extensively, I'm not sure we're opening a big can of worms, but we always, when we make these, are opening at least a little can of worms.
I have questions, if I may.
You may.
Longevity, in my mind, and we increase longevity for, for just this purpose, to provide an incentive for our employees not to leave and go elsewhere. And I'm looking at a letter from, from you, Mike, that says, at least two separate stints. So, has she left and come back more than once now?
Yes, she was employed for, by the Child Support Office from nineteen ninety-seven to sometime in two thousand two or two thousand three. And so she was gone for about a seventeen-year period.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
We're only looking at this most recent five weeks.
We're only looking at this most recent one, I just wanted to, just for this individual case though, but I just, in making my request, I was just looking back when she was rehired in two thousand nineteen.
Thank you.
Okay, usually, and Joel can correct me if I'm wrong, I would say if we were to pass this change in the language to the personnel manual through this ordinance twelve, for purposes of determining years of service, separation from employment for a period of eight weeks or less shall not be considered a break in years of service. And I, when I talked to Debbie, I don't know if she was aware of the eight-week limitation or not, so...
I have, um, thinking that eight weeks is kind of arbitrary, you know, what if it's ten, what if it's twelve? So, I'm uncomfortable with this creating an ordinance based on one specific instance. I think talking about it when we redo the personnel manual or revisit it, I don't think it's bad to discuss it, but I'm uncomfortable with passing this tonight. It seems like an arbitrary designation.
Any other thoughts? My purpose for eight weeks is just so it doesn't open it up to one year, two years, three years, five years, seven years. That there are people who take another job and find out the job's not at all what they think it's going to be, or it's not what's promised in the job interview, et cetera. And usually you can make that determination within eight weeks, so it wasn't totally arbitrary on my part, but that's, you're, it's up to the council. I, I've been in that position myself. Quit a job, got into something, said this is not what's been advertised whatsoever. I made a mistake, and people make mistakes, and...
And I would say, and I don't know, not to say in this circumstance, that this was before the change in longevity, or change of employment occurred. And I, I'm, and I appreciate it, I understand that your, your need to do an ordinance, I was just asking for consideration.
Right.
It's just been a great benefit to our office, as you know, our office was without, we were short a deputy prosecutor for eight months.
I remember you saying that at budget time, that was a problem.
And it was a problem, and now we're at full staff, I just, this would be a way to, while she did leave, she did leave service, and I do think she did, it was a quick change of heart, while the position was still open, it wasn't a lack of us trying to fill the position.
Okay. Other thoughts or a motion, so we can move on to our very long agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I, I have a very hard time with this, passing an exception to a, a change that we just made to try to make it so these instances do not happen. So my motion is to deny.
Okay. I have a motion to deny, anyone else? Has seconded by Susan, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
Passes four to two. I was a nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have additional appropriations, and which there are many. First one, and these are on numerous sheets, council. We have one that will be from the correctional jail lit, as we've called it, correctional rehab facility lit of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand in jail maintenance. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Susan, seconded by, was it Kyle or Shannon?
Shannon.
Shannon, I really can't tell if I'm not looking at you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes six to zero. The next set that totals one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars would be from the public safety lit, it's broken down on your sheet. Sheriff Medical Housing of Prisoners Repair and Maintenance and Utilities to come up with the total I mentioned. Do I have a motion to approve the, that additional appropriation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That was simultaneous also, was it Shannon and... I thought you did, and seconded by someone in the south side. Mike, thank you for raising your hand. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes six zero. Now we have, this is a, quite a few, that's from county general. A chunk being from what we put in council reclassification for those that didn't have enough monies for things such as longevity, et cetera. This is delineated on your handout, we've got coroner autopsy fee. We've, several fell under the council reclassification because they didn't have... under the council reclassification because they didn't have monies for longevity, et cetera. Commissioners' office supplies was delineated, commissioner travel, unemployment insurance, humane society, care for patients, inmates, and secured detention. And, continue to on next page. We also have one that you may or may not have, it's 3,900 for longevity and that's from 911 Non-Reverting State Fund. Talking to Debbie on the phone, she did say all that totaled up to 176,321. I just wanted to give that 3,900 because that was in a letter dated November 1st that I think you got earlier than that last tranche of emails and attachments she sent a couple of days ago. Do I have a motion to approve?
Joel, these are listed on our itinerary with a motion and a second for each individual item. Do we need to do that individually or can we pass these?
I think you can pass it as a group. It just, it's a bit unclear if you don't pass it, but I get all...
Thank you.
And the only correction would be the 3,900 in the 911 Non-Reverting State Fund would be added, but she reiterated the 176,321 is correct. I haven't subjected that to a calculator, that was her information over the phone. So, do we entertain a motion? Moved by Harold?
Second.
Second by either Kyle or Shannon. Your voices sound a lot alike from up here, not looking. Okay, it's been, it's fine. Say Shannon here. All in, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero.
Mr. Chairman, since it's not on our agenda, I would go ahead and make the motion for the 3,900 from the 911 Non-Reverting Fund as a separate motion.
That would be legit. And do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Been moved by Shannon and seconded by Susan to add, since it wasn't on the itinerary, the 3,900 from the 911 Non-Reverting State Fund. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero, and I have this here, Bobby, if you need it, in writing. Next, we have...
Kenan, just for clarification, I did the math real...
Yes.
176,321 without the 3,900.
And...
So, would we need to actually appropriate the additional 3,900 for the full number?
Say if I would. What does that come up to? Is that right?
Yeah, that was...
Okay, instead of 176,321, I have 180, 180,222. Does anybody else have something different?
I don't think that that 3,900 comes out of the general fund, does it?
She, she told me, she told me it did.
Okay, thank you.
She just thought that that 176 number included it and since someone, Kyle calculated it, doesn't. So, 180,222, do we need to make a motion to that new number?
2,500, you're right.
You're right, it is. Okay, we need a motion on the grand total of everything that's an additional appropriation taken out of County General, the total of 180,221. And is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Kyle.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mike. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The new number passes six, zero. 911, and Butch is here. I don't know that he's necessarily, unless we have a question, this is additional appropriation of, and you should have something dated September 11th, if not, the totals are correct, 45,000 in overtime and the IT salary of 4,900 for a total of 49,900. Do I have a motion to approve that additional appropriation?
I, I would like to ask Butch, because I'm looking at the two letters and both of these are coming out of the same fund. Butch, is this, is it 3,900 and the, and the, the others all coming out of the Non-Reverting Fund?
The 3,900 is going on the general fund, I don't know, it's 2,500, that's on the general fund. The 3,900 is for the 2,500.
Right.
I didn't understand that.
But the 3,900 needs to be added to this E911, right? That's why I made that motion separately.
The yellow here, is that what they do? That's the general, but not the one in the general.
Right, the 3,900 that I made the motion for, which is what we were, that I thought came separately out of E911, I don't think any of those dollars come out of general fund, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
2,500, that's what she said.
That's Xed out on our...
Yes, if you look at it, it says 21,000, 321,000, that's the general fund.
Okay, I, do we not need to do that? It's Xed out, I guess I was, I don't see that on the list anywhere.
She did say there was one that obviously was not included and she said it fell under the general fund. Yeah, that's 2,500 and that, so it should be added to the general fund.
So, are we at...
If you look on the bottom right here, it says the general fund number starts with 1,000, that's the general fund.
Okay.
What's the date of that letter, Bobby?
9/11.
But that also says it's coming from the 911 to the county fund. But this is, we were doing additional, so that wouldn't be a trend, yeah.
I saw that on what she had in our package, she crossed out that 2,500.
Right.
We'll get it straightened out.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, from my perspective, the letter that I submitted on September 11th, which you should have a copy of, you know, both of those amounts are coming out of the 911 phone tax money going into my existing 911 budget, 1222.
Right.
That's to cover the shortfall due to short people and have to pay overtime for most of it. The other part of it is the increase in the 911 or the longevity.
Right, got, and that's what she verbally said, we're just trying to reconcile with the paperwork.
I, I could go ahead and make a motion to approve these two additional appropriations from the 1222 to the Non-Reverting State Fund for 45,000 and 4,900.
Okay, it's been moved by Susan.
Second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion which would include, is there any information you just got from Debbie? Bobby? Bobby? They made a motion to approve what he had written on that September 11th. Anything you just got from Debbie would add to that or are we okay with passing that?
I'm still waiting.
It's, it's September 11th from Butch.
And while she's looking at that, did you, I didn't quite hear you, did you say your motion was for the 40, 45,000 or for the 49,000?
Both.
Both.
Oh, yeah, both, you got both.
Both, that's on that September 11th, yes. Are we okay to proceed, you think? We can go ahead with the motion and change it like we have the last three things. We will end the evening having it correct. The motion that was made by Susan was if you have the September 11th letter from Butch, it's 4,500, additional appropriation from the Non-Reverting State Fund and then the 45,000 and then the 49,000 increase in IT salary from the Non-Reverting State Fund. And it was seconded by Shannon. We're just gonna pause a little bit in case there's a correction from Debbie on the phone.
Okay, the 3,900 is going on 2,500, the classification fee, and the council, I forgot all of their, they have been on my phone. No, it's in the 911. So, the difference is taken from away from the general fund, so that's 176,321 for red.
Okay.
And the 3,900 to be...
Okay, we did originally pass that as 176, so do we need to do anything to counter the updated 180 or...
We never rescinded it to pass the other one, so...
Oh.
I make, I moved that we rescind the motion and approval of the 180-some thousand dollar...
Okay, it's been moved that the 180 be rescinded, that we erroneously, not having the right information, added the 3,900 to, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of rescinding our larger incorrect amount, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero, so we're back to the correct 176.
And so, now we have a third additional for 911. So, I moved to approve the 3,900 for the increase in longevity also from 1222 to the 911 Non-Reverting State Fund.
That would be a total of 53,800. I second that motion.
Just so I have it on my notes, what's the new number, 51?
53,800.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded on the, under the E911 for a new total of 53,800 under additional appropriations. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero. Now, we have a health fund.
Would move to approve the additional appropriation request of 7,400 from the 1159 Health Fund and also move to approve the additional appropriation of 12,000 from the 1168 Fund.
It's been moved by Susan on those two motions, or one motion for the two funds, 1159 and 1168. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That was Mike, thank you for raising your hand, Mike. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion for the 7,400 and a 12,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero. Now, we have a lot of transfers. We are one hour into our meeting and we're on to transfers. Under Public Defender, we have, as listed on your itinerary, 3,007, 2015, and 1,100, 2,000.
I moved that we pass the transfers for the Public Defender's Office.
Second.
Moved by Shannon, it sounded like Kyle, thank you. Any discussion? Yes. Yes, as a transfer, we, my understanding, we can put that all together. All, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero. Henry County Commissioners, we have 15,000 transfer part-time to contractual services.
So moved.
Moved by Shannon.
Second.
Second by Susan, I can tell Susan's voice, go figure. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of that transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero. We have Henry County Memorial Park, I think you have two pages. Let me move my itinerary. We have one for 2020, gas and electric superintendent line, 1,500, from gas, oil, and lube to longevity lines, do I have a motion? And who was that? Harold, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of those two from Henry County Memorial Park, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes six, zero. We have several from the sheriff. I, I have these on multiple pages, one's a separate page, it's $30.72 from, from cooks to janitorial supplies. Then on another page, I have 45,000 from deputies to uniforms and then 10,000 from emergency deputies to gas, oil, and lubes. And we need one added that didn't get on your itinerary, so let me tell you about it now. And I talked to Debbie and she said it just did not get transferred from the multiple page from the Sheriff's Department to the itinerary and it's a transfer of 8,500 from the 1,005, 1,000.05, emergency deputies into the fund, 1,005-3,007 to vehicle maintenance. So, it's 8,500 would be added and that's from emergency deputies to vehicle maintenance. Do I have a motion?
One second, Kenan.
Yes.
Sorry, I received a text from Debbie saying that what she typed up on the paper is correct, it's 2072, I think is what she's saying, not the 3072 on the paper.
Which line are we on? Under sheriff or jail?
Is that from the first page for the sheriff?
3072 from, from cooks to janitorial supplies?
I'm asking her again. I'm asking her again.
Okay, I'm glad she gave us her cell number, so this reminds me of phoning a friend.
So, Kenan, I see the, either 2072 or 3072, then I see the 45,000 and the 10,000, did you add others?
Yes, I asked her, when I met with her yesterday, she said everything that was highlighted on the multiple-page requests from the sheriff's department would need to be on our itinerary, and that 8,500 wasn't, and she said that we need to add that because it's going from a 1,000 to a 3,000, and that needed to be added. And again, that's a transfer of 8,500 from emergency deputies to vehicle maintenance. And she did, I got that confirmation over the phone about an hour before our meeting, so it did get omitted from the itinerary, but it needs to be there while we're dealing with the other sheriff request.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we, we grant all of the transfers for the sheriff's office totaling $63,530.72.
And that includes the 8,500?
Includes 45,000, 10,000, 8,500, and the $30.72.
And it is 30 and not 20?
We're gonna go with that.
It's 30, yeah, the letter said 30. Okay, it's been moved by Shannon to approve those, including the additional 8,500 that I alluded to, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Susan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the sheriff requests for transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 6-0. And then also from the sheriff's department, the jail request, and those appear to be accurate, that's the ones of 16,75953 from courthouse security to medical, 19,646.39 from correctional, full-time officers to medical, and $784.50 from secretary clerk to medical. Do I have a motion? Moved by Harold?
I'll second.
Second by Kyle, no, Mike, thank you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Passes 6-0. Surveyor, we have a letter dated November 28th, and this is a transfer of 1,24261 for vehicle supplies to office supplies, $137, travel and training to postage, $61 from legal to postage, $73.25 from travel and training to G.I., GIS office supplies. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
That was Kyle? That was Mike, sorry. Moved by Mike. Who's on first?
Second.
Second by Susan. And do I have any discussion? If not, all in favor of, under the surveyor's request for transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 6-0. We have from Jenny Grubbs, these fall under voter registration. I'm not gonna read all these, and I don't even have a total. But there's from absent voter board, and I think that's, and then precinct board primary, precinct board general, overtime, office supplies, election supplies, repair and maintenance supplies with the numbers that are given, which, looking at her letter and looking at Debbie's itinerary, those numbers do jive, and do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Shannon.
Second by.
Second.
Kyle. I actually saw him. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 6-0. We have approval of expenditure from ARP, this is an update, if you go to the back of the page, I think you've got all pages, we're just looking at number 31, which was recently passed by the commissioners, and number 31 is, do I get the pages separated? Sum of 65,000 for the acquisition of five vehicles from the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department for use by the sheriff's department as pool vehicles, or for reserve officer use, the vehicles to be acquired with the corresponding purchase price, we have 115,000, these are all Ford Explorers, 12,000, 12,000, 11,000, and 15,000, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Shannon.
Second.
Second by Susan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 6-0. We have an ordinance that is 23-10, an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund entitled Henry County Sheriff's Department Mental Health Detention Transport Reimbursement Fund. Let it hereby be ordained, Henry County Council. A cumulative, we're setting up a cumulative non-reverting fund entitled Henry County Sheriff's Department Mental Health Detention Transport Reimbursement Fund. Revenue received from insurers, including health coverages offered or administered by the state from the reimbursement of the cost of transporting an individual to a facility as authorized by Indiana Code listed, shall be allocated to this fund. Revenues allocated to the fund shall be utilized solely for the purpose of paying for expenses incurred by the sheriff's department in transport of individuals to mental health facilities, including maintenance and upkeep of vehicles used for the transport, and the wages of deputies performing the transport, do I have a motion?
I just have a quick question, have we ever collected this money before? No, okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Susan, seconded by Shannon. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 6-0. Number 18 on my list is an ordinance number 2023-11. This has to do with an ordinance fixing the number and compensation of all officers, deputies, and employees of the year 2024. She sent out an attachment that actually.
Are these our salary?
Actually has, actually has the numbers, but the ordinance is listed from Joel.
I'd like, I'd just like to say, I know we threw a monkey wrench in the whole program with what we changed, and I appreciate all the work of the otter's office and payroll in getting these together, I know it wasn't easy, so I would make the motion to approve.
It's been moved by Shannon to approve this ordinance, 2023-11.
Second.
Seconded by Susan, I would echo your thanks and kudos, a lot of work in the last month, and it is appreciated. Do we, yes, I know it has, has been, hopefully the benefactors will be, obviously, our valued employees. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of this ordinance, 2023-011, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Passes 6-0. Last, we have a resolution, 2023-113004, today's date, 004 resolution.
So do we need to add the 2,500 to the 61,600, or is it already in? This is the right number, okay.
This is correct, right, okay. You can read over it, following resolution appropriations hereby approved, reclassification of, yeah, we've gone through these numbers. 61,600 from reclassification, where we put the bulk of the increase in the budget for 2024. We got clerk, treasurer, surveyor, assessor, prosecutor, voter registration extension, county council commissioner, circuit court probation, public defender, E-911, jail and child support. I don't need to read the rest, it's legalese, and do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Harold?
Second.
Seconded by Shannon. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I've got some notes that are fairly important that I'm gonna share with the council, but any comments from the audience? Any questions? And here comes Commissioner Plummer with comments or questions.
No questions.
Comment.
Just comments, and to remind, and so, I mean, I've already talked to Travis today, but to remind everybody that 103 is closed at 500 South, you can't get to Southern Henry County by there. The alternate route, that NDOT, the unofficial detour is 25 West, to get to Tri-Hi, is 25 West to 700 South. It's my understanding that 40 should be opened soon, at least on a temporary basis through winter, so that will help alleviate, but we are going to be, Joe Copeland is working on some stuff, and we're gonna try to just keep reminding everybody over and over and over again, because this is gonna go on until April, that that part of, unfortunately, that part of the county is gonna be difficult to traverse between now and April.
25 West.
25 West, 25 West. Yeah, 25 West to 700 South.
25 West where that old livestock auction bar near Over Sandry, they just hit, and it has an overpass over 70.
So, the goal is to just keep reminding everybody over and over and over and over and over again, until it's done.
Can't get there from here.
Before you step away, can I ask a quick question? Have, has the commissioners addressed the request from Joe Copeland at this point? And I'm thinking about the budget, is that?
It's not, it's not a commissioner, it's, from what I understand, I, we have not discussed anything, Steve said he's talked to Kenan and you, and the, and I had, I don't know, I mean, I know what's going on, but no.
I just didn't know, you and I talked at one time about what, that.
It had to go to job, I don't know if it had to go to job, but you don't need to talk to Commissioner Dellinger.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not in the know.
Thank you.
I know a little bit, but not enough detail.
Thank you.
Thank you. Notes to council, there's gonna be a recommendation, there is a recommendation after talking with Cory, that we put a pause on the food and beverage tax funds, hold back for possible ready, not knowing how much ready, but it does require a sizable match. And I've talked to a few of you, no more than two of you, because the rest, that would need to be in a public meeting, are there any discussions on that? We should, by the time he mentioned next April, May, his final decisions from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, we should have approximately $2 million. But if we get the kind of monies that we're hoping for, which instead of 15 million, maybe 25 million, it would maybe behoove us to hold on to that and pause until we see, because that's kind of majorly benefit the county. Any questions, concerns, comments? Okay. Don't forget, there's a work session with Jason Simler in here between 4:30 and 5:30 next Tuesday. We're basically focusing in on LITS, local income taxes options, previous legislation's gonna have an impact, we're gonna have to look at our public safety lead and our jail in, in light of local voluntary fire departments, we're gonna have to weigh everything and really start that discussion, because we're under a timeline, if changes are made, we're gonna have to make some decisions by March, and I don't think it's too early to start getting information and doing the research of what's best for the county. I also ask in an email that you start looking at the time, the date, and the time of our meetings in 2024, got a letter from the Courier-Times today reminding of some legal requirements to notify the media by January 1st, so we need to kind of pin this down, hopefully, at our December 28th meeting, so we can meet that legal requirement. I'm going to continue to be on the Indiana County Council Association Legislative Committee, the president of ICCA, you might remember her coming to the Basketball Hall of Fame earlier this year. Elise Nacella has been appointed by the governor to be the state comptroller in January, so they'll be looking, the association will be looking for a new president for the County Council Association. State comptroller was, until this last legislative session, referred to as the state auditor. So, and she's the president of the county council in Boone County. Been working with the Hope Initiative, and Jamie Owens on women's transitional housing, and Bobby Plummer's been attending a lot of those meetings, that's the money that we approved recently, the commissioners and the council through opioid monies that were granted to them. It'd be similar to the guest house, except there's basically a void for women's transitional housing, as there is available in the guest house for men. Mentioned the next council meetings on December the 28th at 4 o'clock, there will be more transfers, I think today was the deadline for additional appropriations at this meeting, I think is what Debbie told me, so, but there will be lots of transfers, as is typical. Papers that you need to sign before you leave are in the commissioner's desk in front of you, please do so before you leave. Any other comments from anyone, council? I would entertain a motion to adjourn by one of the fellows on the south side, Harold!